... statements that I need to read. Toluha Fire Department has issued an occupant load letter, a notice of occupant contempt to Toluha Schools Administration Building and Board today. Toluha Fire Department stated that the occupancy is premises by more than forty-nine persons is dangerous and unlawful. As a result, we have limited the number of people in the building for the night's meeting to forty-nine. Pursuant to board policy one point four oh four, individual wishes to address the board on the item on the agenda. He or she may sign up on the form provided before the beginning of the board meeting to request time to speak. We haven't worked out, Mr. Miller, where we have a spokesman and four speakers, is that correct?
We're working on it.
All right. We've got a few more minutes. We'll start at five thirty. Thank you. The last to recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. All everyone is here. The next is approval agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
It's gonna move.
Motion by Ms.
Johnson.
Johnson. Do we have a second?
Yes, okay.
Second, Ms. Lawson. Any further discussion? Now, if you're for the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Now, for the individuals to address the board. Do we have someone to speak other than on this topic?
Uh, yes, we do have one that wants to speak on the item at present.
All right. Go ahead. State your name, please, and address me.
I'm Dr. Neil Lockwood, three ten old work circle. And I know you all, I was here at the work session, you all talked about the item. And I understand why you're doing it, but I would trust that in, I'm sure the administration is thinking about this. As a citizen, I want to reinforce that no child is denied item improvement because of their economic status. I've been, I've been associated with the school system for so many years, my kids went through it and all that. And I don't think we want, we may have a budding Einstein somewhere who's, uh, doesn't have the economic means to be able to put up a twenty-five dollar pay. So I'm just, as a citizen, just encouraging you to do what you think, to do what's right, which I know you are thinking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next chair is Eric Birch. I'm Amy Dawson, Harvard chairman.
All right. Mr. Birch, let me make a couple, one quick statement before we get started.
Yes.
Individuals speaking at the board shall address remarks to the chair and comments should be civil and courteous. We have many friends here tonight, and I intend to leave here as friends. Every person here wishes the same, and our system offer a world-class education, every student enrolled. We may be divided on one issue. Let's treat each other with the respect that each deserves, knowing that the broad goal remains the same. Thank you.
Well, let me start off and say, I know several of the board members here. I'm from Manchester. I grew up in Manchester. I've got a unique perspective. For decades, the Toluha City School System has been the top school system in the area that's recognized. I had friends when I was in high school that wanted to come to the Toluha City School System. One of my best friends transferred from Calhoun County and was pitcher on their state championship, starting pitcher on the state championship baseball team. I have friends in Manchester that send their children to Toluha City Schools. I think actions like the ones that are being contemplated here tonight are counterproductive to that mission and Toluha City Schools' reputation. See on the banner here, I was reading that, says where all children have a chance to learn, all children. We believe that this is targeting the special education program in Toluha because it's expensive to run, it's exemplary. People want their special needs children to be a part of this program. I think that's something to be proud of. Let's talk about Amy Dodson. She's been in this program for ten and a half years, has done everything that has been asked of her. She has zero rights. We could have two hundred people talk about what kind of special education teacher she And Mr. Carter wants to fire her and wants to take her teaching license away so she can't teach anywhere in the state of Tennessee? To me, that's crazy. How is that helping the children in Toluha or anywhere else? That should be your mission as board, in my mind. She's got a doctorate. People want their children to be educated by Amy Dodson. Five years ago, she was the teacher of the year for the whole school district. And what has she done? She gave some advice to Ashley Davis about what typically had been done with Toluha City employees. Angela Davis has some special needs. And Mr. Carter says, this is gonna cost us forty thousand dollars to educate this child. That's a forty thousand dollar kid. That's discriminatory. Amy Dodson, it, it, there were multiple people that were well aware that Angela Davis didn't live in Toluha. The principal knew, multiple superiors to Amy Dodson knew that this child didn't live in Toluha. She was just following what had been done, this was done two years ago, wasn't even done under this administration. Sarah Hardwood, what is she guilty of? She's guilty of wanting her son to get the best possible education. She's been a kindergarten teacher for twelve years, I think she was in the fourth grade for a year before that. Again, exemplary. Nothing on her personnel record. She's got one child that's quote-unquote "normal," and she's got one child that's quote-unquote "special needs." Normal child, no problem. Special needs child, costs more money. Let's get him out of the program. I'm not here to talk about lawsuits or liability or anything of that nature, that's not the purpose of tonight, but you're really opening yourself up to a ton of exposure here. Neither one of these ladies really wants to work under Mr. Carter at this point with the way that he has treated them, the way he's talked to them, condescending, the way he's tried to intimidate them. They really don't want to work for the Toluha City School Systems. What I would recommend to the board, if anything, if any action needs to be taken, why not just recommend a write-up or something for what they've done? Why would we take, take these two ladies' teaching license? That's crazy. These are two wonderful educators that should have been an asset for the Toluha City Schools for decades. They are part of the reason that Toluha is, for this area, the beacon of educational systems.
I'll give you time to close, we'll get closer to five minutes.
That's basically all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. I would ask that these teachers not be terminated. And certainly not their teaching license be threatened by this action because really they've done nothing wrong in this case. I would, I would just ask for your support. We've got several other people.
Right.
To talk on behalf of each.
Mr. Miller?
Next is Wendy Jones. That's two and a half minutes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, I, um, number one did not know I was gonna be speaking tonight, so you're gonna bear with me.
Take, take the time to give us your name and address if you can.
Wendy Jones, three nineteen Drew Lane, Toluha, Tennessee. I have a little boy, Jax, who is four years old, who has Down Syndrome. He has two older sisters, Tegan and Addison, who attend Farrah and Westman School, not one of the high schools, typically developing children. Jax was our surprise child, we're not expecting him, definitely we're not expecting him to have Down Syndrome. He is now mine and solely mine. I'm newly divorced, raising three children by myself. I put him into preschool program because of Amy. We stayed in Toluha because of Amy. We had the option to, for me to accept a position in Nashville in Williamson County, but Amy's the reason that Jax stayed here. We've known her for years since she was in college. My oldest went to daycare with her parents, daycare. Amy has always had a special place for special needs children. I trust her. When you have a child that doesn't speak clearly and that has some trust issues, it's scary sending your child to a preschool program where there are several other children there that have special needs, as well as typically developing children. I never once have worried that Jax is going to be bullied on the playground and the teacher isn't gonna know. I've never worried that when he made this song, someone wouldn't know that he needs more of something. Or that when he did this, that he had an owie and something needed to be paid attention to. That when he did this, most of you would have no idea what he's talking about. That means he needs to go to the potty. He's potty trained now, but when he was two and he started the program with Amy, he wasn't. There are several children in there, and she does have AIDS, but is someone gonna know that Jax uses the bathroom? Or they gonna be able to look at his face and tell that he has to go and change him? Those were the mental concerns. He has some sensory issues. Is he gonna have a meltdown and then think that he's a behavior issue? Or is someone like Amy going to be able to realize that it's sensory-based and he just needs some pressure or to get involved, to work that out? She does do sign language. She did four years of it, is my understanding, in college. For Toluha to have to hire someone with the sensory integrations that she's done to make them familiar with that, the sign language, the autism. There's several children in Jax's class that we treat where I work that are autistic, and they are all over the spectrum. These children have such diverse needs. If Toluha had to hire several individuals, individuals that were collectively only good with autism or only good with sign language, you guys are gonna have to really start spending some money. And Amy can do all of that. My little one wakes up every morning and goes, I go see Miss Amy? And then Jax, he goes to see Miss Amy, and he cannot wait to see her. Now that it's summer, he doesn't wanna get up, he doesn't wanna go to daycare because he doesn't get to go see Miss Amy. When you have somebody that you trust, that will hold him accountable, there is no baby in Jax. Jax can speak, Jax can walk up and down the ladder, the slide, the slides and swing sets and, and if he can't do it, it's not, we're gonna modify this to make it easier for you. It's what do we need to do to help Jax be the best Jax that he can be? She doesn't accept no. It's let's figure out what works best for that child so that the entire program can have him. As I said, I am a solo parent. It is expensive to educate.
Wendy Grant.
Okay, it is expensive to educate Jax. It does cost Toluha to educate him. But it is less expensive to educate him now than it's gonna be when he's eighteen and he goes on social security and disability and Medicare because he didn't have the early intervention. When he becomes an adult at eighteen and lives to seventy, eighty, which is what most children with Down Syndrome do, would you rather spend the money for the first twelve years that he's in school or the next sixty-two? It just, to me, it seems like it's, it's a much more responsible investment to invest in for the early years that he can take with him versus towards the end of his life.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Miller?
Randy Tibbs.
Ms. Tibbs.
Tibbs.
My name is Randy Tibbs, three zero eight Old Ford Street, Toluha. So, I'll read.
This man.
Okay. So I didn't come prepared to speak, and if you don't mind, I'm just gonna redo something that I've already written. Now, I'm a former seventh grade English Language Arts teacher. I know that reading is not the appropriate way to handle this, but since we have the time limit, I don't really have time to.
I've got plenty to read myself, do I?
All right, well, here we go then. Regarding the zoning issue, I understand that one of you all has benefited from the zone allowance from the previous administration. Regarding the special education issues, I don't know if any of you have loved ones who have special needs or have been in need of special education, but based on your actions in recent months, I would think not. I certainly hope that that remains to be true for you. However, should your children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, or dear friends ever find themselves in need of loving care and special education in the future, I certainly hope that the Director of Schools and Board of Education and those loved ones in the school systems shows more compassion and more commitment than you all have shown in recent months and than you were showing in this action. I try to and try to raise my children to put on the other person's shoes and walk around them for a bit and then to act, answer, react, respond accordingly. And my question would be, have you all paused from your decision-making and taken a moment to consider how the lives of these children and their families will be impacted? And if so, did you honestly still conclude that this was the right action? This particular situation at Toluha City Schools is very complex and multifaceted because it's not just that Amy is being wrongfully terminated, although that would be enough. At the surface level, these issues come to mind. Number one, Amy's family's livelihood has been severely impacted. She was suspended without paying for her termination. Why though? She was not the only person at Toluha City Schools who had knowledge of these zoning violations. It's not her job to monitor these issues. These enrollments were permissible under the previous administration. In the spirit of equality, if Amy's being terminated, there are at least five other TCS employees who should also face termination, but don't get me wrong, none of them should be terminated. Let the punishment fit the crime. At the most, all who were involved and all who had awareness of this should receive some type of written disciplinary notice and a warning that things could be different going forward under Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter should not be retroactively disciplining teachers regarding these situations that are allocated under the previous administration. The children, the children, and that while we're all here, no longer have Amy as their teacher, and the families who've grown to love, trust, and respect her and the level of care and education that she provides are the ones who are losing. Why are we hurting the children in our community over outdated situations that were allowable under the administration at that time? The special needs children of the TCS teacher moms, Ashley and Sarah, are being discriminated against, period. The insensitive and cruel words that Mr. Carter used and uses in regards to or talking about these families are incomprehensible and unacceptable from a person whose job is related to children, even from the administrative standpoint. The way Mr. Carter talks to and treats teacher is insulting and degrading. Teachers are underprivileged in that. This thing of trying to silence every single teacher who disagrees with you all on any decision or anything that is said that could possibly cast a negative light on any of your decisions. It's unconstitutional, period. We're all adults, and that fish and pool that is at the heart of any debated issue is the foundation for the development of new ideas and/or compromise.
Ms. Tibbs, we need to.
All right, or you just cut me off. I'm gonna keep going until you've told me before.
Well, it's, it's time.
We're not, it's already time? Aw, snap. Well, I'll post the rest of it on Twitter, so, but thank you for telling.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Whitney Newton.
What's the name, please?
Whitney Newton.
I'm Whitney Newton, two oh two, Central Florida, Tennessee. Sarah's been my best friend since we were tiny. She is a wonderful person, she's an amazing mother, an amazing friend, and a phenomenal teacher. Anyone you bump into, the ballpark, church, grocery store, they've had Mrs. Harwell, they go on and on and on. Oh my gosh, she's so great to my kids, she was wonderful, we loved her. I've never heard a negative thing about her, ever. She's poured her heart into her kids, she's taught for thirteen years, she's tenured, she's great. She's never mistreated a child, she's never neglected a child. She, in my opinion, was forced to make a decision that no parent should have to make. She has a special needs child, I too have a special needs child, and I can empathize because if I was in a position where I felt my hands were tied and this was the best, most amazing opportunity right here with Amy Dodson, or something very mediocre, I can't say I would be the same thing. I think as a parent, any of us would go to the ends of the earth, even if that makes you feel like maybe, maybe it doesn't feel right, maybe this is a rule that also has been broken for decades. So it doesn't seem like a huge deal because everyone has always just used different, it has happened, it's happened since I was a little, I remember people doing it forever, so it doesn't seem like a huge deal. So I can see, I can see using a different address to have my child have this amazing teacher and have everything that he deserves. I just, I think any parent would say that. I think that anybody would go to the ends of the earth and would try to get your child very best, and that's what she was trying to do. She wasn't trying to hurt anyone, she wasn't trying to, um, you know, like I said, neglect a child or, you know, not, not be a great teacher or a great mother. She was doing what she thought was best for her child, and I agree, Amy's the best. And there's no one like Amy. There's no teacher for those children like Amy anywhere. And she's, I just wanna focus on Sarah's character, and she is a wonderful person. She just made a choice for her child that she thought was best for her child, and I can't say I disagree. And Amy is where anyone would want her child to be. And I just can't imagine Amy firing these teachers, and I can't even fathom taking her licenses away. That's, that's insane. I just can't even, I can't fathom. I mean, they deserve to be in the classroom. Our, our children deserve these teachers. It's not fair to our community and these children that might not have the opportunity to have them as teachers. I would be devastated if this, if Colton were coming up in his last year of preschool and he didn't get to have Amy. I would be devastated, I don't, I would, there's no one like her, and there's no one like Sarah. I mean, East Lincoln, the things she does for these kids, far beyond even what we do. She's, she's a wonderful teacher, both amazing, and I think the community speaks for, for the, I mean, you don't, you don't put a Facebook post up and have five hundred people agreeing with this overnight. It's not, that, that just doesn't happen. I think that speaks volumes, for these women. And people don't wanna see them out of the school system, people wanna see them teaching, and they wanna see them treated right. I just, I just think they're being wrong. I think this is overkill, I think it's not fair to make an example of.
Newton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your confidence.
Lauren Ewing, one oh four Fairway School of Art, Texas. I as well, gonna read a little excerpt that was already written. I'm here to support my dear friend Sarah McCray Harwood. I have known Sarah since we were very young. We attended elementary school together, middle school together, and Toluha High School. We spent countless hours together, together on the ball field each spring and summer. And thirty-plus years later, I still consider Sarah one of my closest friends. In the time that I have known her, Sarah has always led by example in sports, in life, and in teaching. Sarah has consistently gone above and beyond to excel in her work. Sarah is a tireless advocate for her students, her families, and for her community, and this has been shown in her work over the past thirteen years in East Lincoln. She fights for what is fair and what is right for all students because she knows that her work, even when difficult, can help make a difference for her current students as well as those to come. We have, of course, like Whitney was saying, the community, we are very much supportive of these wonderful women. We have another mutual friend, Katie, who is a dean of the elementary in Nashville, who had a little blurb that she wanted to write as well. And she said, "In our adult lives, Sarah and I have connected over our mutual love in teaching and improving education. This love is grounded in the firm belief that every student, regardless of situation or circumstance, should be afforded the right to the very best education possible." When Katie and Sarah first began their careers and many times since, Katie would ask Sarah if she would be interested in teaching in Nashville, but she, Sarah would always politely decline and went on to explain that she felt her heart was called to share her talents and commit her work to students in Toluha who deserve the very best teachers possible. For this, for Sarah, it means easily getting into elementary. I ask that you take these things into consideration.
Thank you for coming.
The last? That's it.
Thank you, sir. And we'll move to five point two. For personnel matter concerning Amy Dodson, Chair of Recognition, John Carver, Director of Schools.
I am currently distributing to you copies of the charges for dismissal, which I'll
Everyone have a chance to finish? We have time. Members of the board, Mr. Carver has placed charges against Amy Dodson, a tenured teacher employed by this board. Only decision that this board is charged with making at this time is that if these charges are true, Amy Dodson's dismissal as a tenured teacher from the school system is warranted. Would any member like to make a motion that if these charges are true, that dismissal is proper and that Amy Dodson be notified of her opportunity for a hearing before a hearing officer and this board will appoint? Motion by Ms. Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Austin. Any discussion? Any discussion? Not, I'll call the question. It's moved and seconded that if these charges are true, that dismissal is proper, that Amy Dodson be notified of her opportunity for a hearing officer, a hearing before a hearing officer. Board vote by show of hands, those in favor of adoption of the motion, please raise your Motion passes. Mr. Carver, would you please notify Amy Dodson that this board has voted that if these charges are true, then dismissal is warranted? Please also notify Ms. Dodson of her right to a hearing, and that the request for a hearing must be received by your office within thirty days of receiving the notice. This notice should be provided to Amy Dodson by certified mail, return requested, as well as by first-class U.S. mail. Five three. Personnel matter concerning Sarah Harwell, the Chair Recognizer John Carver, Director of Schools.
I'm presently distributing you copies of the charges for dismissal, which I'll give
Want to change? Members of the board, Mr. Carver has placed charges against Sarah Harwell, a tenured teacher employed by this board. The only decision that this board is charged with making at this time is that if these charges are true, Sarah Harwell's dismissal as a tenured teacher from the school system is warranted. Would any member like to make a motion that if these charges are true, that dismissal is proper, and that Amy, excuse me, Sarah Harwell be notified of her opportunity for a hearing, for a hearing officer from this board will appoint?
Summate.
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion? Not, I'll call the question. It's moved and seconded that if these charges are true, that dismissal is proper, and that Sarah Harwell be notified of her opportunity for a hearing, for a hearing officer. Board vote by show of hands, those in favor of adoption of the motion, please raise your Mr. Carver, would you please notify Sarah Harwell that this board has voted that if these charges are true, then dismissal is warranted? Please also notify Sarah Harwell of her right to a hearing, and that the request for a hearing must be received by your office within thirty days of receiving the notice. This notice should be, should be provided to Sarah Harwell by certified mail, return requested, as well as by first-class U.S. mail. Next piece of business will be...
Chairman, Chairman, the Housekeeping Manager.
Please.
It's my understanding that certain letters...
I'm sorry. I, I need to address that just one second, please. I'd like to, minutes to reflect, we received letters from members of the public regarding the teacher dismissals on tonight's agenda. We will not read those letters during the meeting. However, copies have been provided to each board member prior to the meeting for their review and consideration. I saw a petition online tonight, petition, and I would also request that a petition be presented. It's also be included in the minutes. Anything else?
The charges should be attached.
Charges will be attached. Thanks. Thank you. We're going to, when we come back, we're going to start with the consent agenda. We're going to recess for five minutes, please. Thank you. Consent agenda's next item, is there any item on the consent agenda that a board member would like to have removed and discussed? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as proposed.
Summate.
Motion by Ms. Austin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fogarty. Any further discussion? Not, if you're for the consent agenda, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Unfinished business. That brings us to maintenance report. We went over this during the study session, but I'm just going to give you just a few highlights. Mr. Jensen and I, Ms. Lawson, and the staff met two or three weeks ago to look, to basically go over what all the maintenance staff was doing there in the summer, which is a whole lot. Eight bathrooms at the high school are going to be brought up to ADA standards, which will be a big project. East Middle, there's a whole lot of work being done on the soccer field where bleachers are being moved and concrete's being poured and make the sightlines better and also make entry for fans not have to be going through mud.
Okay, now, like, where is that?
East. East of the soccer field.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, yes. That's great.
Yeah, that you did.
West Middle, we installed more playground equipment for the walking trail. Bel Air, we've gone through the projects over there for the drainage and the fresh water. Maybe the most gratifying part of all the maintenance is that we're being proactive on heating and air now, where we normally had to wait till we had a problem. That pretty well wraps that up, really. Does anybody have a question or a comment from the committee?
Oh, good. They're doing a great job. Where'd he go?
He's out of the hallway. Tim's out.
I know. Everybody's working really hard, and I think that the window is really, really great.
Yeah. We've got some work yet to do on that. There'll be a pull-down door that'll be mounted on the inside, and then we'll do some other things out there, but it's, it's, I think it's a step forward.
Yes.
Okay, let's go to, excuse me, nineteen twenty budget. Mr. Carver.
The, this will be the second time that we've looked at the budget for this year. We've reviewed it in the work session. The numbers haven't changed since last time we talked. Some of the...
And also a committee session.
And a committee session, that's correct. So a couple of the design features of this budget would include the salary steps for all employees that would still be qualifying for a salary step, and then there would be a two percent across-the-board increase. And it would be my recommendation that we reform this add.
So can I ask a, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
All right. On this one, I thought the other one had that undesignated fund balance. I thought there was an amount even in the proposed. There's not?
There was in the last study session. We told you at that time that we did not have good numbers from the state, North City, and in all three of our funded counties as well. Since that time, we have the budget that we sent out to you last week, which you have, has updated revenues. Revenue forecast to support that budget.
And I think the increase you all is in the BEP. It's a five hundred, about a $589,000 increase, and that's on the first page. So that's where some of the money is coming from. And also the allocation from the city.
So there was an additional amount needed for, like, the technology purchases?
Everything, everything that we are able to do for the upcoming year, we're not going to have to dip into fund balance.
Okay.
As I understand it, this is the same document that we looked at previously with the exception of revenues in that category.
That's correct.
Okay.
Excellent work.
Yep, and that's good to say.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
It's dispelled.
It's great.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept nineteen twenty budget on the second reading.
Summate.
Ms. Fogarty has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Austin. Any further discussion? Not, if you're for the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Next is the audit. Thank you. Everyone is, had a, went through this at the study session. I do not want to go through line by line, but we could do that if we had to. The crux of the matter is we've got a clean audit. There was one recommendation that the auditor would like more people in the finance division, but at the same time, the auditor also admits that that's probably not feasible. Any other questions or comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the audit as of June thirtieth eighteen. Ms. Johnson, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion? If you're for the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Anybody opposed? Next again. All right, textbook adoption amendment. Let's speak to that, please.
Sure. Back in May, we submitted our textbook adoption to the state, which we are required to do each year. Since that time, we have discovered we have two other classes that we are required to adopt for as a deduction to marketing and government civics within this adoption cycle. So we need to amend our original textbook adoption report and re-submit it to the state to include those two subjects.
Motion already by Ms. Fogarty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? If you're for the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Anybody opposed? All right, board policy two point eight zero four. Mr. Carver or Ms. Johnson?
Okay, um, let me get back over here. In our packet, we have the existing policy on expenses and reimbursements. The tech, the policy committee has reviewed this policy, which is two point eight oh four, and we would like to make the following changes to policy two point eight oh four, expenses and reimbursements. Line ten currently reads, "Expenses for travel will be reimbursed when the travel has the advanced authorization of the director of schools." We recommend that we change that to expenses for travel excluding the purchase of alcoholic beverages will be reimbursed when the travel has the advanced authorization of the director of schools. That's line ten. Line seventeen currently reads, "The members of the board shall be paid for transportation, lodging, meals, and other pertinent expenses when traveling on business for the board." The recommendation is to change it to the following. "The members of the board shall be paid for transportation, lodging, meals, excluding the purchase of alcoholic beverages, and other pertinent expenses when traveling on business for the board. Respectfully submitted."
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, Phil, counsel has reviewed and approved. Do we have a motion to accept the proposal from the committee? Ms. Robinson has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fogarty. Any further discussion? Not, if you're for the motion, please respond by raising your hand. New business eight point one, it's the event calendar, which has been over this several times. One or two changes made. Ms. Vaughn, can you review us for that? If I'm correct, if there was a change?
The one thing that I...
I'm not trying to load you up.
No, it's, um, board study session, which typically there's no meetings in July. There is a board study session scheduled for early July fifteenth. Also reflected on here is the result of the May board meeting where the school days were changed from Monday, April thirteenth to spring break, Thursday, March nineteenth. That's also reflected on here.
Is there a motion to accept the event calendar as presented? Ms. Fogarty has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Austin. Any further discussion? If you're for the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed?
The new, the nineteen twenty calendar.
Now, eight point two, nineteen twenty calendar. We all have, we have a copy of that also. Is there anything, Ms. Vaughn, that needs to be noted here?
No, it was already in the study session. No changes since then.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept?
Summate.
Quick on the trigger, Ms. Johnson. There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion? If you're for the board agenda, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? iPad fees.
Beginning of the fall of 2019, students in grades three through five will be assigned an iPad. The device will stay with the students for the next three years or as long as they're enrolled in the TCS. To help sustain this technology investment, it's recommended the board implement an annual $25 technology usage fee to students being issued iPads. And then in reference to the public comments made earlier, we will be more than willing to work with students on some kind of alternative funding so that each child does receive an iPad in grades three through five. I would also want to make note that one of the things we will look at in the fall is a review of our current technology inventory and what would be appropriate going forward.
Everybody understand, and we went over this again in study session, eight point three iPad fees. Do we entertain a motion to accept the iPad fees?
Summate.
Motion by Ms. Austin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? Not, if you're for the motion, the iPad fees, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Ms. Vaughn, be sure you got that opposed. Superintendent's report. Mr. Carver.
As you came into the building tonight, many of you noticed the, the window that has been placed in the personnel area where we're excited with the work, and Tim keeps floating in and out. Tim and his, his team have really done a good job of, of working and making that, that transition a lot more customer-friendly as their folks come in. The other thing I would make mention of is that we are in the process of the interview selection process for the principalship at Bel Air. We did have a plethora of candidates. Tomorrow, we'll begin the process, the first round. We are doing a video conference with six of the candidates. From those six, then we will screen it to three or four, hopefully to have those formal interviews scheduled by Thursday, and the target to have a new principal named at Bel Air by end of week or by end of next week. One of the things that we're, we're doing a little different, the process is, the first round is... One of the things that we're doing a little different, the process is, the first round is a, is a video conference with all the applicants. And in that video conference, we are including Ms. Fanning, myself, as well as several of the teachers from Bel Air, so they'll get to help with that process. When those selected for the formal interview, it will be, it will consist of three parts. One part will be a formal interview, which we hope to include Dr. Norris in that, as well as a couple of the teachers. The second part will be watching a sample lesson and having the applicant script-take, take notes, and then do a simulation of a post-observation conference. And then the third part will be, the third part will be taking a tour of Bel Air. Again, I don't know if the waters turned back on yet or not, but I know they're working over there, so they'll get to at least see that part. But we're excited with that. I made mention to the board, too, that one of the things, a new position we're looking at for the fall is a Director of Student Services. That individual would be responsible, taking on some of K's responsibilities on the zone requirements and out-of-zone requirements, but also would, would take on more responsibilities in that they would be working with the counselors. And we would identify families in need of assistance and then coordinating with community resources. So we're looking at the things holistically. And I see Tim just, again, slipped back in. Tim, you've missed it a couple of times, but we, I want to just go on record again as saying we appreciate the work that you've done, your team, in meeting the maintenance needs throughout the district and also the upgrades here in the district office, Tim, so thank you, and thank you to your crew.
Thank you very much.
The only, attached in the board packet tonight are the new hires and resignations. And as you can see, staff have been very busy working through this. It might also be noted that we had several resignations and that one hire of note is our new baseball coach, Brian Morris. And he is in the process of assembling his staff right now. So we've got principals, coaches, teachers.
Great hire of, of Mr. Morris.
That would be it.
Okay. Is there any, any piece of information, a comment, that needs to be brought out, board member? Mr. Miller, will you be available to talk in just a second when we get finished? Anybody else?
What?
Go ahead.
Are we doing anything about the consent agenda?
Yes, we did that, first thing we did.
Where was I?
I got you, Mark.
Sandy has, why I said, just have Sandy double-check it.
Six different motions, so you've been here.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Fogarty, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Austin. We are adjourned.